September 13th, September 2022. They're voting to be an egg, so.
Um, go.
All right, everything's first. Wait. Jesus. Dead. The conscience tried me out. I didn't check. Very good. Are we back on now? Okay, you are. Thank you, everyone, who's been watching us as kind of standing still. Um, just had a little bit of technical difficulty. So we're just moving on to our November 8th, 2022 council meeting. And we're moving on to section C, which is the adoption of minutes. Uh, we're pass number one, which has been tabled and number two, which is the police communications committee minutes. September 22nd, 2022. Counselor, any comments in the lives needs edits? Harry, you want to see that? All right, if I could get a motion to accept them as presented. Counselor Henley? So what?
I move that we accept the police communications committee minutes from September 22nd, 2022 as presented.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. You have your title number three, which is our human services advisory board meeting minutes of June 15th, 2022. Counselor, any comments or questions in relation to these minutes? All right, if I could get a motion to accept these minutes as presented. Counsel, vote.
Make motion that we receive these minutes in the humans as human services advisory committee this information.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Yeah, first, um, item number four is September 6th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. Um, as revised, which I believe is as has initially, um, presented. Any comments or questions in relation to this? All right, so I can get a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the administrators' com- uh, administrators' comments, um, for the September 6th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. Counselor Henley?
I move that, uh, we acknowledge the council acknowledged the receipt of the administrators' comments for September, uh, the September 6th, uh, 2022 regular council meeting.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie? Moving on to number five, which is the September 13th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. With the O A's comments. If I can get a motion, any comments or questions? If I can get a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the administrators' comments for September 13th, 2022? Counselor Henley?
I move the council acknowledge the acknowledges the administrators' comments for the September 13th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes.
Okay, so let's just, just so you're aware of that, that's the, um, motion is to acknowledge the receipt. Excellent. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. In regards to the September 20th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes as revised by the O A. Are there any comments or questions? Counselor Henley?
Yeah, there was one thing right at the very end of the copy that was distributed to us. Uh, my understanding it's been corrected. It's the very last line from the narrative of the meeting, um, had said disallowed, private, allowed.
Well, in the, um, very last line of the minutes.
Yep.
Are you able to go to the last page of, um, the September 20th regular council meeting minutes?
Probably not.
So, okay, so and you're comfortable with that? Okay. Now, the, uh, the comments and question that have been amended here for disallow. We have, uh, also have, um, the comments that have been received from the administrator. Um, which I think it's important to read parts of, parts of this into the, uh, record for wholesome understanding of the administrators' comments. Um, Callum, are you able to? I'm going to share my screen. So we have on September 20th from the O A in relation to the September 20th meeting. Sorry. The resolution was as per section 6.12.2 of the Lincoln Fisher's code conduct by law to direct city director of corporate services to engage investigators to conduct this formal investigation. The O A has disallowed that motion as set out for that the motion does not specify. Breaches of the elected officials' code conduct identified in the complaint or the counselors to be investigated in the motion are its two reasons. My confusion, my confusion around this is that this is a motion that is out of camera. I mean, out of in camera, where we don't specify that. On the right is our code of conduct. Which identifies in section 6.12.2 that in order for us to move forward with a formal investigation, that we direct the C A O to engage an investigator to conduct a formal investigation. As you can see, that the motion is exactly what's wording our code of conduct. So this is something that I've asked the administrator for clarity on. Um, the O A continues to proceed and goes on with, even if he could read the letter, I'm not sure what that means. He cannot conclude that counsel has followed the process as set up official code conduct by law for preliminary review of each complaint. And so as we can look into that, the preliminary review, the formal process that we need to follow in relation to a code of conduct complaint is that a, is that a complaint must be received, um, by either mail or email or by using a complaint form. Which is then indicated and provided to the mayor. Upon receipt of the complaint to the mayor, the mayor shall conduct a preliminary review of the complaints to determine whether to proceed with a formal investigation of the complaint. In the course of the preliminary review, the mayor will request the complainant or request the elected official to answer any inquiries or to provide any records or information to the mayor that considers relevant for the purposes of the review and the person must comply. In that, that the preliminary review must consider whether the complaint is within the scope of the bylaw, the context and intent of the complaint to ensure legitimacy of the complaint. And further, any further action related to the complaint, um, will serve the purpose of the complaint process instead of section 6.5. Further, 6.12, upon completion of the preliminary review, the mayor may choose two courses of action. Is to summarily dispose of the complaint or number two, which is 6.12.2 to direct the C A O to engage an investigator, conduct a formal investigation. So further on to the C A O, official administrators' responses is indicated here. That it does not appear that the city council conducted a preliminary review of each complaint. City council does not appear to have considered the mandatory requirements for its preliminary review. And so I believe that the, uh, official administrator has error, city council, city council does not do the review. The mayor does the review. And further to that, that the administrator had never asked the city council, nor myself, the mayor, whether we had done a preliminary review. And the O A goes on to further state that he does not have before me the complaints of these materials and they have not been provided to him. So this is an area, this is of significant concern where we're going to request the O A for clarity that he's made a, a a decision based on not even seeing the documentation. He's indicated that he has not seen the complaints, um, and he has not read the material. And yet he's decided that these, these complaints are disallowed. So one of the challenges we have as a, as a elected official board is that according to the M G A, we must by by law establish a code of conduct to govern the conduct of counselors. And so the challenge we have with what the O A has done here is that he hasn't gone through the process in which we're required to go through. So we're, we're looking to get more clarity from the official administrator, um, as to, I guess, uh, how he can do such a thing without even seeing the documentation. So one of the things that I'm, I'll be looking to ask, uh, out of this as a motion is to have a more detailed review of the official administrators' comments. And have our lawyer brought back to council next week to explain rather than, than simply my, my explanation. Um, having said that, are there any more comments or questions in relation to this September 20th regular council meeting? Counsel what?
Through the chair, uh, I'm just a little confused here as to what exactly is happening. So the way I'm understanding it, we are questioning the decision of the official administrator and spending additional tax dollars illegally to re-question something that has already been presented to us as disallowed.
That's, that's what my motion is, yes. The reason, the main reason is that the official administrator identified that he never even read the documents. Isn't that concerning?
Well, through the chair, if I may add, what's concerning is that we're going to go through documents here that are clearly being approved by the official administrator and continue to drag the names of three counselors through the mud, which I intimately am against.
Okay, moving on. Counsel Dean?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, through the chair. I'm assuming that since we are, uh, showing part of, uh, what the official administrator has, uh, sent to us, that we will then make the entire document public, not just excerpts. If we're going to do part of it, then I think we should be, uh, making the entire document public and I would be willing to make a motion thereof.
Yeah, that's fine. This particular situation was to go through the first motion. So I showed the entirety of the O A's comments in regards to this particular motion that we disallowed.
I'm, sorry. To be clear. We are showing, uh, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up on my email, how many pages this is. We've only shown highlighted portions. If we're going to show highlighted portions, I would like the entire document to be public.
So if you can see, Counsel Dean, Council Resolution 220920-19 starts on page one. Continues through to page two, continues on to page three and stops at the bottom of page three, middle of page three, which says as such, I disallow resolution dash 19. That's 100% of the information that he's, he's releasing regards to that motion. Do you question that?
Yes, uh, because, um, this, so while this is being presented here, uh, as a like screen by screen, uh, I, if I was sitting at home or if I was sitting in the, um, if, if I was sitting on, uh, on the other side, um, I not had an opportunity to read through the whole thing. I guess what I'm saying is I'd like this document then released to the public.
I concur. Uh, the second point of the resolution, which is 220920-20 indicates, and I think there's some misunderstanding with the O A, um, who has not bothered to ask for clarification, is that the motion was passed to further investigate the 17 elected election act breaches and bring back the progress report to council on October 4th regular council meeting. And so he proceeds to disallow this, which I believe he's referring to our authority to investigate. And I think the word investigate is, is what's being misunderstood. What we were looking there for staff, obviously, is to gather information so that we can present it to the local, um, the elections authorities. I don't think we ever intended that, uh, we were believing that we are the election authority or the election commissioner. So in that, in that item, we're looking at simply gathering information so that we can present it to the election commissioner. Because he, one of the comments he indicates is that he doesn't believe that council has the authority to investigate under the election act. And again, I don't think we've ever tried to mention that we did have that authority. We're simply saying that we're collecting information and then, uh, we hope the, the next steps can be to provide that information to the election authorities. So this is another item that we're seeking clarity on, um, as to why the, uh, O A would want to get involved in interfering with an investigation, uh, with the election concerns. So are there any other comments or questions? Um, in relation to the September 20th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes, um, we're looking to accept a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the administrators' comments, um, for September 20th, 2022, uh, regular council meeting minutes. We'll hold on to the motion. I think we're going to. Counsel Henry?
I move that council acknowledges the receipt of the official administrators' comments, um, for the September 20th, 2022 regular council, uh, being council meeting minutes.
Are there any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie? Um, the, the final, or the motion to come out of this, this discussion was the motion to have, present a motion to have a more detailed review of the O A comments and have our lawyer brought to council next week. So that they can actually explain this better than I can. Are there any comments or questions in relation to that motion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie, thank you. And moving on, Counsel Henry?
Uh, final motion, uh, council meeting, uh, I move that, uh, council releases the, can you go to the top of the page or bring it in?
Sorry.
The O A decision reports, uh, for the meetings where, uh, I understand disallowed.
So do you want to specifically state the rationale for this? It's submitted October 18th, 2022? As the title?
I, I'm looking right now.
The other, the other one is actually says submitted October 20th, so there's difference between the two. Callum, can you put the motion up on the screen? It's the O A decision report rationale for decisions submitted October 18th, 2022. Counselor Hannity?
For the September 20th council meeting?
For the September 20th, 2022 council, regular council meeting.
You can fix that later, but.
Any comments or questions in relation to the motion?
Yeah, well, sorry.
Counselor Dean?
Thank you, through the chair.
Okay, all right. Questions or comments, all in favor? Carrie? Thank you. In regards to September 27th?
Just don't let their bodies, the state of theirs. It's a lot more, we know some of them, some of yours in here, about state of theirs.
It's more fun listening to the state of theirs because we kind of cut through the ice and slide down to a little bit.
I'm very interested in your case. See, I'm all, I'm all spacing here. Even when I'm, when you, 20,000, very poor, just, yeah, the difference, it's, it's talking anyway.
Just one term sentence. Just one term sentence.
We're very constructed. Soon, I put them in a slippery condition, so they cut out the, like, it's, uh, just back your race, but I'm trying to lock up the, you're, 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 you don't, it doesn't work. It's a, it's a system. Thank you. But it's, 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 it's,
Great, thank you everyone for your patience. We're having a couple of technical difficulties again. I believe we left off, council would correct me, that with the September 27th, 2022 special council meeting, that we had two motions or one motion that we were looking to make, two motions we were looking to make. I believe Counselor Hannity was in the process of making that. Calum, if you could pull up the motions page? I think, I think that was the correct one, actually. We'll just, we're just changing some of the dates. But this is actually correct. It is the 27th that we're accepting. Okay. Counselor Hannity?
So I move by motion that council acknowledges the receipt of the official administrator's comments for the September 27th, 2022 special council meeting.
Yeah, Calum, can you say, change that from administration to administrator?
Yeah, the official administrator.
Put official in front as well. Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie? There was a second motion to release the data. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Dean?
I would actually like to amend what I'm saying, today being motion back. See, all of the parts of the, which, which, which.
I'm not sure it all means Shannon. They have to be name specific, for sure. So then I would like to. We may have to, you might have to call up what you're referring to.
Thank you, sorry, thank you, you're worshipful. Think of understanding the motion, correct, and, you know, you try to navigate here a little bit, is that council release all the official administrators' comments about the motions?
Yeah, not entirely sure. I think he's going to clarify that, okay.
Yes, we have received one, uh, where the motion read, where it's, 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 where September 27th, uh, and the reasons, uh, September 27th, even four persons, where it's, 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 where it's.
So what he's referring to is that the O A releases a summary statement that indicates that they've approved all of our motions. And so he's, he's asking to release the motions that have been approved by the O A, just the fact that they say approved, as well as the reasons for why the O A had disallowed something. And so we've, we've already been present, or have been agreeing to release the, the reasons why it was disallowed. And Shannon's asking if, Counselor Dean's asking if we could release the ones reasons, or reasons, just the fact that they were approved.
Right, so I, I'm still trying to clarify in my own head, so, so I'm just going to back up this, so September 20th, it was just a motion passed to release the entire official administrator's document with all reasons?
Through the September 20th.
And then now that there was a motion, basically, it revised as a motion for this, basically all the same reports, specific council meetings that are named, I guess, whether they're approved or not, I think it's entirely important, but I'm not trying to, you know, just trying to get the understanding from this, I guess.
Counselor Hannity?
I'm not opposed to the motion. I, I believe we should be very clear in it, though, is all of these documents, when you look at the, the administrators, they're marked classification of public, whether the motion is allowed or disallowed. They're not marked anything on the reason, right? But should he submit us something that's marked protected aid or whatever, right? By us having a motion that says release all with such integrity, because now we're basically trying to release protected document. And we want to make sure that, that it's accounting for.
So you have to name specifically the documents?
Yeah.
So, Calum, you've got here a motion that has to release the O A decision report rationale for decisions submitted. So October 18th was the one we've done already. And so the second one is rationale for decisions in full submitted, October 20th, 2022. And what do, what do we call this, September 27th, 2022?
I have them all printed here.
So we're just talking about the rationale for decisions, right?
From the 27th, it is the O A decision report, appendix, September 27th, 2022 rationale for decisions submitted October 20th, 2022.
Any motion?
It says on the form of a, uh, single approval.
Where they all? And all in favor of, of Shannon voting? Carrie? Thank you.
That's what I'm saying, okay. As soon as he picks out, here.
I don't know if this is correct. It's not what we're on right now.
Counselor Fong? Just as a way of clarity, Your Honor, the rationale for decisions are linked as an appendix to the report, so they require, carry the same classification, I believe, as the report, as it's in the appendix. Thank you. That's my unofficial opinion.
Can we, can we just jump back to the motion previous to this and complete it ahead? The one that had the 27th and the 20th, yes. Just, we just have to finish this. Sorry, please, we didn't. We have to finish this one.
I was sending my motion, I was going to make a new motion that Calum.
We did, we did this one, it was just about the releases.
But are we not, are we not initially doing a release of the September 27th document?
That it will be included in this.
Okay.
We've already done this motion.
We're not doing the same as we did the first one.
Exactly.
Okay. We don't have any of this documentation, right?
We don't.
That's good. Nobody else does that, right?
We've all seen it.
It's supposed to go up, right?
We've all seen it.
Point forward. Are you able to bring up the documentation so the rest of council can see what we're talking about? Do you have the documentation? Or the always? Okay, so the very top of that document, can you see what the title of it's called? Okay, so that exact wording needs to be in your motion. Councillor Handel, is this your motion?
Uh, no. Through the chair, Calum, motion would be that council release the official administrator's decision report rational. So you can just delete, you've already got it in there? Yeah. And then you type in official administrator against a release. Yeah, official decision report rational for simple support submitted September 6th. First. And the appropriate appendixes. Because that's how, I believe councillor Fong outlined that they are, where they thought were, well, the name of them was, and the official administrator's reasons for certain purpose.
Councillor Handel?
Not, not the appendixes.
And the official administrator's reasons for certain purpose.
So, just a point of clarity, but I think the rational for decision report is the appendix. The individual reports, you know, at the top of the picture, we may have a different name. So, or releasing the reports for other needs, being made. Yeah, so the official. I also try to make my note, I just not every minute, remembering each other. They were all, they're all great about, whatever you may hear. You do pass a rational.
Anyway, he's going to have to say again, September 47th. I see no question. That's the one that you think about, that you say. Say, it's not going to be that loose, it's going to be tight. So I guess it's just very, yes.
We can separate the divisions, but we might have to. And official. This is a report, council, we've decision before appendix.
No, well, that's what we just, that's what we're certain at the top, that's what we had.
Appendix.
And so I think the problem is, the top of the document says that, our attachment on our email says the official administrator's reasons for certain purposes. So we're not going by the?
Yeah, to go by the document name.
Right, the discussion is, what is the document name? Is it what's named on the attachment? Or is it what's named on the?
The document itself.
So, you're saying that you believe that the title of it then is rational for decisions?
Appendix, and then appendix. We can put in brackets right after this, rational for decisions. So now we've got, it's on the top line, excellent.
So you specifically want to stay for September 27th and 20th?
Well, we already did September 27th.
So we did that.
That most of our documents will check.
Then I think we're good. Any other comments or questions, council, relation to this motion? Take a read. Any final comments or questions, guys, council? All in favor? Eric? Thank you very much. Thank you, Calum. Moving on to item number eight, which is our October 4th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. And if I can get a motion. Motion acknowledged and received the administrator's comments for September, October 4th, 2022. Councillor Handel?
The council acknowledges the official administrator's statements for September 4th, 2022.
Acknowledged and received. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on to item D, which is business arising out of the minutes, which is our action list. Do we have items on the action list that we're presenting today? Okay? Councillor Handel?
Yeah, I was, I was planning to say, on the agenda, for everyone, the action item, it's beside the, usually on the agenda. For example, the first item that these day produces, it shows the action item alongside. It's so many new processes that's being put into place. I did notice that on your agenda, the all-tyre weight vehicle test comments, it relates to a motion on, yeah, October 4th, but it is also action item 22 dash 27.
Okay. Okay, so we're bringing today's action items forward underneath the report for information. Okay, thank you. If we can move forward with our staff reports, our first staff report, which included conversation with the Jerry Gaudreau in relation to legislative services. Do we need to, motion accepted, the action items as presented, or? True. We're bringing forward the action item list, items below.
Legislative services shaking their head, no.
There's one, true. No? Jerry, do you wish to present the report for decision at this time? Kim?
Today, I am asking council to allow Jerry Gaudreau to help us manage our legislative services department. He has tremendous experience in that area and as we're bringing in a new process and reframing the department, we'd really like to be able to use the expertise of Jerry help to help manage us through that. And he is from SAG group, so I give you a grant to have permission for that.
Okay, so you're looking for permission from council as Jerry's department's strategic advisory group? Great, any comments or questions, council? Councillor Dean?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the chair to Jerry, if you'd like to speak to this at all in terms of, right, if we're moving him, I'd like to hear from him about his feelings on.
But to back up, we're not moving him, he's just adding additions to his role.
Sorry, thank you. So to clarify then, just how he feels about us adding additional.
I think it actually, as well as, this takes some time for a lot of the job to do as well. So as we all know, the strategic advisory group is very busy, moving more people in. And so, Kim and myself have actually been kind of team-aging along, using each other's expertise, back and forth. So, and to kind of answer your question, councillor Dean, is it's going to be very busy for both of us. And it's going to be very struggle, hard time sharing and struggle. However, I think for the city and for this team to gel and to succeed, we want to go be some type of guidance and expertise. So I'm not trying to play Justin Trudeau here, not give anybody an answer, but however, I do feel that we're the veterans of the city, we're making the choice of going out there and helping see.
Okay, city director, Kim, sorry, councillor Fong?
Uh, it's been a matter to. Is there a timeline with this and kind of a follow-up question? Seems that we're adding additional work onto this, do we need to look at hiring or additional work in the future to this group to make it successful?
To the mayor, to councillor Dean, or councillor Fong. Thank you for that question. We did discuss this and we did say the timeline would be somewhat indeterminate. Simply because we're trying to re-establish our process and really define it. We feel that under Jerry's guidance, that would be great for us. I believe both our legislative services team are excellent, hardworking. They just need a little bit more guidance. So in time, if we feel that Jerry doesn't have the time to dedicate our team, it still isn't where we want them to be, we definitely would do that. But I think having the asset of Jerry here now for us, we may as well use it while we have it here in-house. And then they can grow underneath him.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, you're looking for us for motion, council, to allow this assignment of parts of Jerry Gaudreau's time from SAG group to legislative group?
To oversee and manage the legislative group, yes.
To oversee and manage, okay. Councillor Fong?
For the chair to Jerry or Kim. I'm just wondering here, I'm just looking at learning Jerry Gaudreau to be assigned as manager to legislative services. So I'm just wondering, was there that much free time that Jerry had that he's able to take on? A full manager role, I'm just wondering about the logistics of.
I think Jerry mentioned that, oh, to the mayor, through councillor Fong. I think Jerry mentioned that we are actually adding to our team in the SAG group, we're looking to add to that. So that was always on the books, to be able to do that. And the one thing I do need to mention as well, that was needed to be corrected before I go on, is that he's also overseeing our legislative management development with Jody, who is helping us establish getting all our paper copies digitized. So, I'm sorry councillor Fong, that answers your question. Jerry, did you want to speak to that?
To the chair, councillor Fong. It's very sudden, no. At this time, yes. Previous levels we have, because it's constantly involved. Of course, there's a lot of things mentioned in, so my time of expense, examples, speaking to the customer, it's a lot of time. So therefore, really, to just measure within this, I think it can allow me to make changes on the idea of service, the ownership shift. Therefore, the conversation, particularly noticing in that, you know, allow me to make the effort, to make this problem competitive. Therefore, the conversation was particularly noticing in that you, allow me to, to make the effort, to make this problem competitive and speed, and change this, um, you know. Just kind of make changes too. I know Ms. Wallace and myself, you know, we're talking all the time, but she's not here every state changes and I can't give her. Again, one thing I do want to state is that, uh, like I said, myself, we're helping each other on, on certain things, like she does have decent communications and I'm kind of, I'm just, you know. So, I was wondering, we're in a very team, we're just trying, trying to, the entire organization itself, we, but, I'll say that I can call Kim, as well as say very, tell. How do we move this equation forward and positive?
Yes, and I do want to add to that, if I could, which is that, um, Jerry and I do work very closely. I'm not hands-off, he's not hands-off, we're both, uh, but there has to be one decision-maker. And he has great expertise in this department, and so we're looking for him to help us define what the department will look like.
Um, Cal, I'm just wondering, uh, in your motion that you're proposing, um, along with maintaining current responsibilities, just the word maintaining, uh, between with and current? Is it a little bit maintaining? Counselor Watt?
Um, through the chair to the chair, I just have a question that I observe may reach, uh, competent geology, so I'm just asking, if you're willing to camera, that's appropriate for a few minutes.
I think we could. We're just, I don't know, I'm thinking. Vote on the only camera, vote on this one? Yeah, just needs a motion. That's it. Counselor.
I made the motion to be the win camera at this time.
All in favor? Jerry? Thank you. Actually, just wait.
We're in one just a second.
Oh, nonsense.
We're just coming out of the camera. If I can get a motion to come out of the camera, Councilor Hammond?
I move that we come out of camera this time.
All in favor? Kerry, thank you. All right, coming out of the camera, a motion that's coming forward. Uh, Councilor Dean is going to present.
Uh, yes, I would like to make the motion that Jerry Goodrow be assigned as manager to Legislative Services on top of his current duties and responsibilities until May 16th, 2023, with a progress report given to council on February 14th, 2023. Uh, this assignment could be extended with a motion of counsel.
Cal, I'm sorry, I got my glasses on, sorry. Kerry?
Can we, uh, is there a chance we can get it on our screen so people home can see it?
Are you, are you allowed to do that? Excellent, thank you. Uh, Councilor Dean, is that the motion you wish to present?
Uh, between responsibilities and may, should say until. Progress report to council. Progress report to council.
Sorry. Sorry, progress report to council.
You can be long to, um, the, um, motion can stand there for short.
Yes.
Councilor Henley?
Yeah. Um, for clarity, I'd, I'd like to, to make some suggestions to change in this motion, the wording of the motion. Uh, because I, I, I'm not fond of this point, right? In that it's not our business to appoint somebody on your C A of tourism, right? So my suggestion is a motion that council agrees to lend Jerry Goodrow to Corporate Services to oversee and manage Legislative Services Department along with maintaining his current responsibilities until May 16th, with a progress report of council. This arrangement could be extended by further motion of counsel.
You mean that as a fragment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Better we can vote on the amendment.
Officially? So at least I lend Jerry.
So lend Jerry control of Corporate Services?
To Corporate Services. They write it after a little bit, it's before the overseen.
Yeah. Corporate Services, yeah. To oversee, yeah.
To oversee. No, sorry. Which could be extended by a further motion of counsel.
Sure. Is that a complaint with, what you're looking for, Chancellor Chen, Councilor Dean? Okay, are there any comments or questions in relation to the motion presented? Okay, all in favor? Kerry? Thank you very much. And moving on to our staff report for information, East acreage is updated, presented by Elizabeth Armitage, Planning Community Growth, Infrastructure, and Mark Rielt.
Good trip, see you in this one today. Hi, Mark, good afternoon. Uh, Kerry will be looking at a quick, for a little update. So, um, as you can make it aware of this study, that possible. So, one of the, um, random words in the area, when it had a can in FEMA blast, you can go to water bed. It's the original. And that study was completed and sets the point as a 256 game. I was in, uh, the public draft on, on October 31st. Uh, and for you to make comments to ensure that it has the needs. Um, so on today, give a quick update of what that says, there will be some minor, uh, certification in the, uh, some of the models. Uh, it kind of not, you didn't date for anybody owner. So, um, so good news. Uh, very positive. The response was not going to be. So, uh, what, what they did was they started saying what was not today at 24 to. And then he projected based on all the other things that happened over the year. And then he went and gradually added 10,000 units into, to, to. And we, we kind of, uh, modeled, basically, to my model, to, to, one is keep out. And one is give a, 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 uh, one of these, uh, max, uh, what happens outside of the. So, we have three different power requirements. So, for a single bound residential, the, uh, I think three, four, eight, three meters a second. Uh, yeah, roughly will continue what's happening. On faulty family, we, on, on units, uh, and on industrial and commercial, we need 200. So, right now, if there is a thousand people, say, plus the, I'm all down in, uh, reconnection with, with, around the, we have the, we have the. Yes, we have the 200, and then we have in the middle, we have a 500. Uh, so now we have, so, so all of our, uh, pay for, and 200. So, that's good. So, report will basically say, have the, both of our, right now, we got, uh, their fleet. And also lots of commercial, then, uh, connect to, uh, if global plan is staging up. So, starting off with our line. And here is, do we start a commercial highway? Very, very positive. We, uh, are trying to bring, uh, work to council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's a lot of council. Um, looking at the dates, we're already on a report to council on this report. Uh, we, at this point, can't share the reports much. Uh, but summaries of the reports and then next steps that will be to enable development starts to happen. We say we just put also the other areas. So, in light of the timing, we have the North acreage meeting.
Thursday, yeah.
Um, so we're just just, or six, we'll be meeting in the, for, for, for you guys, talking about this study, uh, for these acres. What recommendation we made to change, um, the land use by law? Essentially, it broke all these standards and what needs to be done to actually see well return? Right, absolutely. I guess we're making up. But news? Now it's.
So, yeah, thank you, that's, that's incredible. Um, so just to be clear, so you're saying that the max density of 3,000 on that pipeline approximately?
Approximately, I mean, that's where we modeled that.
Yeah.
And, um, and long down those, when you do that, you have to go back, right? So, there's.
Right.
Yeah. Um, you've got seven different scenarios to that.
Including?
Uh, your, your, your idea.
Yeah.
You could do if you want to go right way to commercial.
Yeah.
Someone want to go on to commercial farm. You could do that.
But Mark says me.
Yeah. Uh, so the, uh, expected it would be this recommendation of heighty timing. And, uh, in order to allow that future staging, we can move a smaller heighty, even cheaper cost. But the earlier flow, it actually see really difficult to do. Version, in the future of it. Think about that, you know, better future. So, um, very exciting, and I'm surprised, but when you do all the updating, they were losing, unfortunately, before running that water station. And two years ago, our adults, several years, outside of five. So that's really that loss, loss for a care being used.
Yeah. Yeah, the east side is incredible. Um, so in regards to the assessment, obviously, you must wait till we receive it, but, um, did the, did the engineer take into account efficiencies gained, you know, at nighttime? For example, when there's not use?
He did look at that based on the fact that, you know, the pipe down.
Yeah.
There wasn't much. Off the, um, and that would have been the case had there. There you go. That had there not been, um, uh, enough water there, right? But because that, those other upgrades, uh, I'm surprised that actually made those, those changes. Uh, there is, the management of that doesn't make much sense, right? So, but.
Yeah, we got 3,000, because that's the in-use flow. You're saying our capacity would handle.
Yeah.
Um, and then if you ever went above 3,000, then that could be used making it quite more efficient?
We could, or, and so part of the issue, um, is when we've got, one of the other big changes is we've got Clearwater to the north.
Yeah.
Right? And they're going to bring that pipeline across, and then we have the 500 going north south. So it's basically another 800 meters, a thousand meters to get from there to here. Uh, and that would just, that's our whole backbone on that side of the city. So by that time, that's not really, uh, going to, it's not going to be a problem, I think. So, but if someone came along today and said, hey, we want to do commercial on the highway.
Yeah.
Uh, we could supply a reservoir with enough flow, but we couldn't, we could only supply 120 meters, not the 200, that they'll need, right?
Yeah, that's tremendous, uh, this capacity is available for these.
Yeah. Really impressive.
Yeah, really impressive. Okay, uh, thank you very much. Councilor Hope?
Um, just one question I have, um, to help top up the numbers for the water that we need over there. Is, has there been any? Is, has there been any thought of trying to pull, uh, water out of a stormwater pond? Is for firefighting purposes?
We haven't looked at that. I have done that in the past for industrial uses. Um, it would be something that could be done. Um, it's, uh, it's definitely, they do that Rocky View actually in some of the lower industrial usage, but.
It would be a dedicated fire.
Yeah, it's the, it's in the storm pond and you have to keep certain water levels and you have to. It's a dry pond, it's a big, uh, it, it works and I've done it. It's actually, um, one of my other jobs I've done, actually that whole concept. Um, it's probably depending, it really affects the usage of the lands. Because you got this big pond and if you want to say put a wall or, you know, a store there, that's. But if you want to do something more like they do with Rocky View where they have the high storage those things, though, that's a very good uh, way of doing that. So highly commercial, probably not the right mix for that location, but it's something that I have done. Um, is the fire department will probably have some issues with it, but we can work around those. And so we, we work with them, yeah. We can arrange to, to, you, you basically have to watch your, uh, you know, how, how it's done and make sure that doesn't freeze, all that kind of jazz. Um, so they, and then you have to make sure, I've had a fire department that told me I don't want hydrants because I didn't have the connections to hydrants. They always grab it on the lake. This is rural area. So it's kind of backwards. So depending on your fire department and how they operate, they bring the inspection funds.
Um, yeah, it's, it's a very neat idea. Um, that would allow, if we do do that, would it allow us to expand the facilities then on the other side of the current audible water line then? So you don't have to, so if you can account for the fire flow out of the storm pond for, let's say, so many houses, so many, what, what have you, then does that release the fact that, that the audible water does not need to supply fire flow to that particular group of homes?
Yeah, I would probably, it's really hard to use for a home because it has to be contained within, as part of your fire suppression for that unit, that lot.
Yeah.
So multifamily, maybe you.
Well, it's okay.
But I don't think you would get a lot of, uh, with any kind of single family product or, uh, individual residents. And that's what we've been talking to the residents on that side.
Yeah.
There's opportunities there. Um, again, we still want to provide a fire, is that eighty-three liters a second for single family? Hundred and twenty. And then I want to have a plan ultimately to get rid of it. Because ultimately, we're gonna build out at some point fifty years, whatever. So you don't wanna, not, I think that's where other municipalities get into trouble. They don't have a long-term vision of how it's gonna fit like interim, long-term, those kinds of left.
Also, are you suggesting that you get rid of stormwater pond, long-term?
Well, you would, you could convert it to a more, to, uh, maybe, maybe higher risk. You need solar storage, use it that way. There could be.
Yeah.
Opportunities, I think, more on that. I would suggest in the city would be more of an interim measure, right?
Okay. All right. Any comments, council? Thank you very much. That's very exciting news. Uh, council, if I get a motion to accept that as information, councilor Hannah?
I think that council accepts very easy paper, just update. As information.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Great. Uh, just as a point, sorry, Mark. Um, we're gonna communicate this to the residents and the favorites.
Yeah, I think we have our next.
Oh, we're going.
We don't have one set up right now.
So when, as soon as, so my plan, as soon as I get the report from the developer question, I will, uh, ask you permission.
Yeah.
To distribute it to everybody. But at the end of the day, once it's in my hand, that's the stumbling, I'm the stumbling block saying, get one. So now the question then becomes, it's because of planning issue in terms of the MVP.
Nine steps, yeah.
Always like that, right? So I think it's a huge, was a huge hurdle that no one, no one, no one answered this question, like, it seems great. But, but no one answered the question in the last ten years. Is there any laws inside the city?
No one asked the question.
Right? And no one provided the information. So I'm very thankful for the, the landlord who supplied this and now it's a full area.
That's so exciting. For next steps, um, there is one particular land that our post very well taken to all of the groups. I'd be happy to call her, um, email her, whatever. And there are a couple of email, please want to be, um, to get updates. So I can kind of feed it out that way and let everyone know that the intention is to send the steps to back end for you guys. With a much more substantial report and analysis of how we have.
Steps forward, yeah, okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Thanks again. Big thanks. Um, okay, moving on to type number two, which is our community standards by law, zero zero four dash one two. Actually, item twenty-two dash one two six presented by Sergeant Furrow Bowman. City Chester. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you?
Good, thank you.
You can be advised of all my comments, you may get the chair for the rest of the members. Uh, I have a couple of items to try to indicate. Uh, the first one will be community standards by law. And it will be, uh, liquor in the park on the project, you get this site. Um, it was following through, uh, consultation in early two thousand twenty-two, C H S player. Again, I have a program on July nineteenth, to allow the use of liquor in some of the city parks. Program, uh, prevent the use and consumption of beer in line at designated parks between the hours of eleven AM and eight PM. Um, as this program was initially submitted as a pilot, we determined if it was successful or developments of the pilot need to be adjusted. I can advise, uh, the pilot program appear to be very successful. And I have a careful, uh, review, the sound office and the R C M P. Um, I can advise the, you know, officers to get complaints related to this pilot. Um, in addition, our peace officers who are frequently conducting, uh, full controls in our beaches and parks feel to notice any violations or anything else. Yeah, um, it went very, very well. Uh, I did follow with Rick Gellner, who is our parks manager. Who mentioned beside the minor issues of, uh, occasional litter left behind, uh, his department received no significant, uh, issues with his work on the dinner. So, uh, based on what we've seen and the experience of summer, uh, the pilot was successful, so. I'm very pleased with that.
That's really nice to hear. It's, it's great, uh, to present, it's, uh, kind of, I think, what was expected.
No, we didn't also notice, we did have people, a lot of people visiting from outside the city, so.
Oh, that's good too.
So.
Fantastic. Any comments or questions, council? Uh, with that, with that particular staff report, would you like us to accept that as information now?
Sure.
Okay. Council Hannah?
Uh, I can do that, uh, on my study sheet, you know.
Hi, do you ask me to do this, sir, if you want, or how can we do it? Both together, it's up to you.
Could you say that council accepts, uh, the liquor in the park, uh, report and is the information?
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie.
Thank you. That's really exciting.
So I, again, I apologize, this is an embedded version, uh, I had to get, they put this together, but, uh, administration also asked us to, uh, review the, uh, review the use of ice huts on the lake for ice fishing. Um, it was suggested that the bylaw, community standards by law section eight, some five, some B. Um, being added to exempt portable ice huts, uh, on the lake. However, they did not be used for overnight accommodation, uh, meaning they can't be used for camping. Um, the reason we put this, uh, camp yet in there, uh, we make our, make our, uh, jobs difficult as peace officers. If we can't, if you're camping out to deal with some of the folks who can't, you can find camping in our wooded areas or parks areas. Uh, nail lines on sides of the city. So if council chooses, uh, to amend the bylaw to lose ninety-five ice huts, we can certainly do that. Depending on how feedbacked over late front orders in, in council. Uh, I was suggesting back at the back, sometimes seventy-two hours, which is a full weekend. As some late front orders may be upset if they have to steer it, or somebody's dilapidated, uh, I said for more than a week, more than a weekend, but again, that's for your consideration. And I'll let you decide how you want to proceed with that. Uh, it also included, uh, some of the excerpt from the Alberta government site regarding official regulations, which includes if any ice huts, ice shelter is left on the ice longer than twenty-four hours, the order must contain following information, contrasting colors on attached to the height, including their wind number, wildlife identification number, and also their name and their telephone number if you need to. So again, it's up for discussion with council. Uh, would you wish to proceed with this and do you wish to attach the timeline to these at all?
Uh, so just, just to clarify, so if we wish to proceed with some of these, the, the format for us to do that is to, you have to amend the bylaw, shakes through readings?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay.
I'm very sure.
Okay, okay. Um, all right. Any further to present, or may I ask some questions?
Not regarding this, is any question regarding ice huts?
Okay, uh, council, are there any questions that you'd like to ask the rest of us? Council Hannah?
More, more efficient statement, uh, on this particular one. Uh, this, this is on the agenda, it's for information. Uh, I would think there, you know, the next step would be to come back, like, request for decisionals. You know, whether or not we wanna, uh, do the update to the bylaw, then flush that a little bit more. Right, and I suspect the only answer would be yes, like, we'd be very interested in probably, yeah, something along that way. But just a matter of process.
Oh, I think, uh, I think, I think what Council Bowman is looking for is for us to indicate if you feel liking the bylaw.
Yeah.
With, uh, certain areas of focus. Um, one of the things that I like, uh, particularly, this recommendation on if it's there longer than twenty-four hours, that it needs to have the contact information and, um, uh, how do you get a wildlife identification?
Give it a live or, basically your fishing license or your ID license.
Okay.
So you apply it through some gas stations, most sporting goods stores. Um, you know, you have to a fisheries officer, uh, because we don't have the authorization to deal with the ice huts under the sport fishing regs.
Okay.
To deal with them then.
It's not something you can apply online and.
Maybe you can apply it here.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. I do like the, definitely the idea of people knowing who's, who's, as it's out there, as it might have a problem, wouldn't they? Um, contrasting color. Um, so what, what does that mean there? Are we looking at putting, uh, reflectors on these things or are you actually telling people to paint these things to the colors?
No, I believe, reading the regs, there, um, it's written in contrast, so it's easy to read in snow. Uh, they're not looking, they're not taking a very spout sign out of it or anything.
Okay.
It answers the safety, I would suggest perhaps put some markers or.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah. Uh, count, can you go down a little bit? So we can see some of the other recommendations. Sorry, up, I guess. Uh, up a little higher. Um, you know, it's interesting following, um, some people are suggesting our sister city, but in Solomon Lake, uh, some of the things that they've, they've done where they've identified certain areas where they allow, this is a longer conversation, but where they allow people to rent out these, uh, they're not ice huts. They're, they're actually some kind of, uh, a larger building. But they let people rent out and they create a, they create a little mini town on the ice. And they create like a, they put street signs out and stuff and they put lights on in the ice and they, I, I've never seen it, but they were telling us about it at one of our conventions and it seems quite incredible what they're, what they're doing. I'm sure there's lots of bylaws that happen around all that, but it seemed very, uh, very community-oriented.
Yes. So I, I, I've heard of it also.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's very, you know, it's unique to have a lake, obviously, and that's, it's, they've, uh, seem to be taking advantage of it fully.
So much more.
Yeah, if you were, exactly. Uh, council, are there any other comments in relation to what we're discussing? Uh, okay, if I could get a motion, so, so I guess, uh, in relation to coming back, um, council, are you are we prepared to suggest that we agree with, um, fishing shelters having identification on the size of them? Uh, if they're blowing apart or something like that, it's probably, well, um, we can have a motion, I guess.
Yes, sir, if I need, that is actually part of the sport fishing regulations.
It is part of the, period.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that solves that. Um, so what would you like us, I guess, today to give you some idea of what we would like to see?
If, um, if it's just something you're quite interested in, uh, why do you have to come back?
Okay.
Motion for you, uh, to explore this further.
Uh, we definitely, I think, uh, are interested in exploring it further.
Okay.
So please, uh, come back, um, when, when do you think you could do that?
Uh, based on my workload, uh, the next council meeting is, I'm sorry.
So we have next week, Tuesday, um, as well as the, well, twenty-second becomes our budget meeting, so I'll get Harry. The fifteenth is, uh, is our next time and then we jump into December sixth.
December sixth, I can certainly do that, then.
Okay. All right. Um, council, if I could get a motion, we should give a motion that he comes back on September sixth, okay? Council, if I get a motion to accept this information and to have, uh, Council Bowman come back on December sixth for a more robust conversation. Council Hannah?
Okay, uh, I think the council accepts, uh, both, uh, ice hut, ice fishing hut presentation as information and that council requests him to return to council, uh, with further options on this issue or these issues, uh, for December sixth.
Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. And you have one final question?
Well, yes, sir.
Okay.
So the next one is regarding, uh, the traffic bylaw and some off-highway vehicle updates. Um, as you're aware, the city passed an amendment to the traffic bylaw to run a pilot program that would allow the use of which is on public roadways. Uh, to provide our residents with greater access to the ice service for recreational activities. Administration requests, requested that start piece and then dates be established for this pilot. However, this would be kind of problematic as he, as he states, will be dependent on the thickness of the ice and existing weather conditions. Uh, through discussion with the administration, uh, we've been suggest, the city used three established lake access points at sunset, anniversary, and, uh, sunset and, and the boat launch. And then these lake access points would be closed until the parks department could confirm the thickness of ice and it could sustain the weight of an awake on the highway vehicle. The pilot would then commence and run until such time it is determined that the ice thickness is no longer considered safe and the public launches will be closed and the pilot will be glued at that time. Uh, the park, parks department already does, uh, weekly ice measurements, so there's no additional cost. And the opening and closing of the public access points, uh, would be decided through city communications team. On the benefit of controlling these access points until the ice is deemed safe, that any user choosing to use the lake surface prior to getting these access points will be doing so via alternate means and at their own risk. And this would reduce any of our, of the city's liability and increase public safety. As when the access closed, access is closed, it's still not safe. When they're open, it is safe and the pilot will do that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's, that's very good. Uh, I'm just wondering about, we're tying into the access to the lake, uh, for safety, which makes a lot of sense. Um, and then we're tying back to the connectivity of driving on roads, right? So, um, does that need to happen? I guess you get a situation where a person's driving down to go to the embassy that's open, finds out it's not open, has to turn around and go home, but he's broke the law on the way there.
It's, uh, education is the key.
Yeah.
Again, uh, this is a free, this is a pilot.
Totally.
It is, uh, again, uh, residents will know that assuming if, if it gets on a habit, the city can call pilot off. But again, my goal here is to educate first before we begin.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I agree with that for sure. Uh, council, are there any further questions in regards to that? Uh, so you would like us to provide, this is just for information, or you'd like us?
This would be for information.
Okay.
At this point, I can make amendments upon your request to the existing traffic bylaw to include just one link. And I can bring it back to you also on the subject.
Okay, that council, is that appropriate? Seeing yes, okay, if I can get a motion to, uh, allow Council Bowman to come back on the sixth and accept this for information. Council vote.
Make the motion that we receive this report as information and that we, on the request of Sergeant Bowman to come back on December the sixth for an updated report.
Some comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. All right, we can just jump for a second to I O G, new business, which is minors, we have two items, minors sports. new business, which is minors, we have two items, minor sports. I believe the conversation, uh, I'll pass it over to Counsel Dean. Is for us to accept the terms of reference essentially?
Yeah, so this conversation would be, uh, if you accept the term of reference. Um, and then a question I would have would be, uh, if we did that, uh, should pass, uh, this is one where I was appointed later. So I wonder if we look at it December 6th or if we should reaffirm or just continue on, but, so yeah, the first step in this, or the first step in this certainly is, would be to, uh, to pass the terms of reference for the minor sports.
Okay, Counsel Hannity?
I wish there was some reference with the penalty, please, on the screen, just to discuss it.
Um, Counsel Dean, could you talk just some of the highlight points of our, of our line?
Yes, thank you. Um, so that the mandate of the task force would be that the task force on minor sports development will advise and support counsel with the enhancement and development of indoor and outdoor sports facilities. The task force will also develop and implement actual plans to provide recommendations to counsel on how to support the overall growth and development of minor sports in Chester. So really, uh, the idea there being, uh, what we talked about similarly at our organizational meeting, uh, that idea of purpose of committees coming back, making recommendations, uh, and, uh, working alongside, uh, a lot of the strategic vision stuff that we've talked about and, and things that we'd like to see accomplished, uh, moving forward when it comes to recreation, uh, here in the city. Uh, and, uh, and, and this task force, uh, has a lot of people, a lot of history in our community, uh, and a lot of expertise in the world's, uh, sports areas. Um, I mean, uh, some of the responsibilities would be the servant and advisory capacity. Uh, development suggests priorities to plan for facility enhancements and development, uh, because, uh, the idea being, uh, not just on new facilities, but we're, what can we do with enhancement of facilities that we already have? Uh, and, and how can we support, uh, multi-sport? Uh, the thing that I really like about this task force is that it truly is multi-sport, uh, both indoor and outdoor. Um, and the other thing I appreciate a lot about this is that, um, the indoor sports are really wanting to, uh, support, uh, outdoor initiatives and vice versa. And I think that that's going to help, um, those overall as they certainly do grant funding and things like that at, at different levels, uh, that they'll be able to, uh, support each other, uh, in what projects can establish. So when there's a project or even want to sink their teeth into, uh, then they can start to, uh, write, uh, reports for each other. This is something that you see across the office sector especially, uh, with lots of letters of support and things like that. And so this is inherently built into this committee, uh, since they're all working together, uh, to accomplish, uh, goals. Uh, that the, um, composition is made up of five to 15 members of the public, but, uh, those members would come from the associations. So the idea is that we wouldn't name specific people to this. We are naming, um, organizations. And the purpose of that is, uh, organization, uh, can last for 50, you know, 70, 80, 100 years, uh, but four members change out or, uh, coaches change out, those sorts of things. And so this would provide just that continuity and sharing of information, uh, because that way it's, they're representing, uh, their association. Uh, and the initial term of this then would be for two years. So that, uh, these associations can work on this for the two years, uh, with the hope that, uh, this will continue, get expanded, um, those sorts of things. So I would suggest those are the highlights, uh, of this terms of reference.
Okay.
You're welcome to any questions in the area.
Thank you very much, Counsel, have any questions?
So to Counselor Dean, uh, I see through all your sports organizations, you have various there. But do you not see soccer? Just give me that brief.
Uh, Chester, you're in for vocal. Is soccer?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Hannity?
Yeah, uh, just a, a suggestion that the bottom of this office issue where it says, well, number shall be included in council resolution. That really that involves, it's not sort of the Phoenix line. And you're going to say, oh, man. And you were going to be somewhat careful because it's, members are coming from each association. So the associations, the public pieces, which are pretty careful. So it's, maybe some sort of advice from Counsel.
Uh, sorry, I think you threw to the Chair to Counsel Hannity. I think this, this would be the same as what we see with, uh, with other, um, committees as well, say a lot of the library report, right? Um, ultimately, counsel does give oversight, if you will, to the committee and who's on it. Uh, and so we're approving the associations, right? So that piece still, I do believe, uh, does need, uh, to exist.
Yeah, and in this case, where my sports show centers, members' associations will be included in the council. Those basically say, yes, they don't care who it is. It's, uh, the record is in this organization. I just want to ensure the wording is not, sorry, what's not given, or you need to name a person.
I see, interesting. So that, so the composition, they could say something along the lines of, the council task force on minor sports development will be made up of members of the following associations.
Do you, do you just add, um, under your composition title, uh, add, um, member organizations after members? Just say members, member, take off the S, and put organizations? And then you're kind of done?
If we're, if we're all good with that, yeah.
Okay.
This is our committee, so.
Yeah, I want to get that, I mean, this is what we're going with. That sounds, that sounds good. Any more calls, Juan?
Uh, just maybe. Uh, just a suggestion, I guess. Um, on the separate page, there's a number of, um, organizations um, that are to be confirmed.
Correct.
Um, it seems I'll, we can approve them or, do we just want to approve those as, and if they want to join, they can? Um, so that it doesn't need to be updated?
I, I think.
I don't think any question would have an issue with any of those organizations. It's just a matter of whether or not they. Again.
Yeah, and I guess my question back to, to the Chair to Counsel, will be, um, are we okay with the idea that we may not have the exact wording? So we may not, at this time, have the exact wording of what the pickleball association is called. Uh, so it would be, the intention is that the pickleball association, we're working on some names, figuring all that sort of stuff out, that we're working on kind of the, the heart behind the motion, if you will.
Yeah.
Uh, and if counsel accepts that, I think that's very.
So how do we state, um, just state names to be determined? Not by counsel?
Legal, legal, like, legal names to me.
I, I would say that it, it'd be okay the way it's listed and then just take off the to be confirmed.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think your answer needs to be over this.
Well, I think too, I can sort of through the Chair to Counsel, I think on two, once I, uh, once this gets approved, then I kind of allows me to go a little bit more. Uh, I could even at times come back and say, um, hey, the wording on the ringhead should be this. The wording on pickleball should be this. And make a simple motion whether or not it emerges item or just following our, um, following our process plan.
Yeah, I agree with Counsel Hannity?
Just, yeah, I can, you know, say, uh, just to me, the ringhead associations.
Okay.
Well, if there's more than one.
Uh, yes, except it's called in this ringhead in that case. And so I just want to be careful of that, so. Yeah. Yeah, so I'll get the exact names, uh, once, and, and this.
And then, yeah, okay, so if I could get a motion to, uh, um, accept, I mean, one motion, the minor sports task force terms of reference, um, with the amendment of organizations, member organizations. Has a motion, Counsel Dean?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the terms of reference for the council task force on minor sports with the amendment of, uh, adding word organizations after member, uh, and also removing the to be confirmed from the organizations on the second page.
Any comments or questions?
We want to get this in terms.
I'll type it up, okay?
Do you need a suggestion on the voice text?
Yeah, exactly.
In the end, Fox, like, if you know. Actually, I'm rereading that sentence, I'm not sure if that works. The council task force on minor sports development shall be made up, sorry, council task force on minor sports development, all organizations, oh, yeah. One word is. To be confirmed on the second page. So I think to be confirmed should be an official motion. No, sorry, 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 sorry. As amended, so right now you have it as amended, comma, removing, and then, so after removing should be quotation marks. And after confirmed, put in quotation marks. And changing the other. Those are the amendments and stuff.
Uh, maybe, maybe just add, uh, exactly where you are and just say, um, to member organizations. Counsel Bowman? Okay. Uh, Counsel, are there any further questions to comment in relation to this, uh, motion? Okay, Counsel Funt, Dean, sir, if you're going to read it again?
Yeah, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion that counsel accept the minor sports task force terms of reference as amended, removing to be confirmed to member organizations and changing the members to member organizations.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. And with that, we're moving to our final presentation. From, uh, Abby Carver, Transportation Management by an update. The contractor.
I will put up to me a motion, I will need to present something in camera first related to this contract and then this motion.
Okay, we can move to, uh, quick in camera.
Sure.
Thank you.
If I get a motion to move in there? That's cool.
I'd like to move in camera this time.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're just coming out of in camera. Thanks for your patience. If I can get a motion to come out of the camera, councilor Pope?
Would we come out in camera at this time?
All in favor? Jerry?
Uh, all right, thank you. Hi, Navi, uh, we have a motion coming out of the camera that we'd like to proceed with. Alan, if you could put that motion up firm. I would like, if I can get council to provide this motion, pass a member? What's the fuck?
I think motion that council approve and award, award of this contract to E X P Consultants to complete the transportation master plan supplement and authorize the city director of growth and development and the mayor to sign the contract.
Council, are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Kerry? Thank you very much. All right, well, that concludes, um, our open portion of our council meeting today. We have two items now to go in camera, and these will be the last items on our agenda. So those of you in the, in the, uh, audience today, um, will be going into camera, and then we'll finish those items, and we'll come up and go straight to a term. Uh, so if you wish to wait, that's okay, but if you don't, that's okay too. Uh, if I can get a motion to go in camera? Officer Pope?
I'd like to go in camera at this time.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Kerry? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And the council member?
Yes.
Yes.
I think now we can go to the speakers. Okay, put it in session.
Hi, thank you everyone. Thanks for your patience again. We're just coming out of in camera. I'd like to take this opportunity to ask for a motion to come out of in camera. Counselor what?
To make a motion to come out of camera at this time.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. At this time, there's no motions to come forward with. So we're looking at just getting a motion for adjournment. Counselor quote.
I make the motion not be adjourned at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?